Good evening. Calling to order the public hearing on House Bill 581, the homestead exemption bill. It's February 18th at 6:00 PM. Be with me if I open some vacation. Father, we just praise you and thank you for all of the blessings you bestow not only on Columbia County, but the greater Augusta area of the state of Georgia. Pray, Lord, that you would be with us tonight as we discuss these issues that you give us tonight. Honor you, ask these things in Christ's name. Let's stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Just want to thank everyone for coming. Comments, just to open the meeting. And actually, let me say, we have full quorum. And it is approved, so we'll get straight to the business of House Bill 51, excuse me, 581. It's always been my position to do whatever we can to control the growth of government. I don't know about some of you folks, but I've been frankly inspired by what I've seen Elon Musk do and Doge, peeling back the onion to see really what's going on. But as a commission, our responsibility is to ensure that the intended consequences of House Bill 581 are real, but also plan for the potential unintended consequences. Those could threaten the safety and security of Columbia County, which sounds like a stretch, but we're trying to think 20 years down the road, not summer. But just as an interesting point, Dana Beth, if you'd flip, I, next page, just so folks know, this is actually what voted on, House Bill, I guess it was 1022?
Yes, House Resolution 1022.
Right, Resolution 1022. So this is what was voted on. And then from there, that resolution that the voters approved last November, the legislature then turned around and wrote House Bill 581 from that. So voters gave the General Assembly the authority to pass legislation, or actually put it on the, made a constitutional issue that they could pass legislation to control the growth of property taxes. That's what became House Bill 581. Now, House Bill 581 is 27 pages. It was taking us time to work through that now, and frankly, I'm glad we've had four hearings. Just as a reminder, the two primary factors that determine property taxes, the millage rate and the value of the property. And what we're discussing, again, is how the value of the property has escalated. Over the last nine years, the county has reduced the property taxes, property taxes, the millage rate, nine of 10 years. So what we control is the millage rate. The value of property is determined by state statute, which in essence, that's what House Bill, or Resolution 1022 and House Bill 581 have done. They're tweaking that. My perspective is, House Bill 581 was, had really good intentions, all about controlling the value of growth in our current market value. Of course, after, I think what really caused it was COVID, COVID, and why in the heck the houses, I mean, this housing went nuts. Every market exploded. So, again, we began this whole process, I was very much a non-negotiable stay-in because I saw it as a way to box in growth, legislature. Having the hearings, it's been fruitful for me, and I'll speak for the commission, I think, as well, and hopefully citizens, as we've heard questions, complaints and questions that we've been able to dive into, and I'll share some of those with you. One of the questions that we received, folks said, you have 200 million in cash, why do you need, why do you need to raise property values to get more tax money? We worked through with folks to tell them, you slide up if you will, this is an example. Yeah, so there's $91 million in the, oh, the water department. That's an enterprise fund. Funds itself, we're not allowed to use that money for anything other than the water department. Well, if you look at the bottom of costs and the remaining obligations, we have 91 million in cash, we have 87 million committed to projects. So somebody say, well, you've got $200 million, three, well, we do, but you can't use it for that, it has to be spent on this, and it's already been allocated. Have splosts to projects, goes before the voters, and there's a penny tax, that that money goes to specific projects, projects that the voters have approved. Once they approve it, let's just say it was a $100 million splosts for all these different projects, because we have, we're so financially sound, we have a AAA bond rating with all the agencies. We'll go to New York, we will actually bond that money, we'll get it, we get the $100 million or 2% interest, take the $100 million, put it in an account, and collect 4%, good business, use the sales tax money as it comes in to pay the bonds off. But in essence, we have a spread to cover the increase in value of, or the increase in cost of the projects as they escalate. I heard on the news on the way out here, the, on the state plan to replace, I guess it's a 13th Street Bridge downtown, delayed and delayed, and now they're talking, I don't know, 28, 29, 31, but it's gone up, the cost has gone up to 65 million, it's 15% escalation in the last three or four years. So we bond the money, make more money, but we use that to cover the cost. So there is cash, but this cash comes from bonding the splosts, but it's tied to specific projects. So there is no 200, 300 million sitting out there that is not allocated to a project. Anybody wants the splosh projects, we can get that too. I had this presentation way long, lots of stuff, and I thought, folks don't want to sit through this, but we'll get you all the information you need. One of the other points that, so that's, again, there's cash, but it's allocated to projects that are committed. And the next point that hopefully we've gotten across is, we don't control, don't control the Board of Education, City of Harlem, or the City of Grovetown. We're the upper left-hand corner, that's Columbia County's millage rate, all-in. I mean, so these are the all-in millage rates for the other, other entities. Folks have called and want to know why we've raised the, why we're, school board costs as much as it does, and I said, you're talking to the wrong group. They're good folks over there, they're doing the best they can to manage that, but the only thing this board controls is, shows is the upper left-hand corner, just to make you aware. Next point, put the next page, and this is a web address. Folks have said, they've said, we have too much cash and there needs to be audits. We audit, externally audit financially this county every year in depth, but most folks don't know, we also audit every department, and actually constitutional officers too, they don't have to participate, but the constitutional officers in the departments, at least once every four years, but it goes through, come on in, have a seat, welcome, oh, you're good. So if you, again, this is, this is where the audits are, you can see our annual audit, you can see audits from every department, and it flows through the processes of, are we following the cash flow? If the rec department happens to take cash for whatever the case may be, there are very strict audits that we go through. So we will see each department, each office audited at least once every four years with this operationally, but then financially, we do it. Next point, and these are points that just have come up, and I just feel like reiterating since this is our last hearing. Folks have said, oh, how much money is it? Well, we have $100 million, that's, that's our general, general fund is $100 million. 44 million of the 100 goes to the rule of law, sheriff, jail, all the courts, Superior Court, Majestic Court, courts am I missing?
Probate, juvenile.
Juvenile. So $44 million goes to, to the rule of law, state court, yeah, so that's a lot of money, and we have the third lowest crime rate of 159 counties, and I attribute that to the money that we spend on law enforcement. When you peel back the onion, the rest, IT, the ambulance service, we, public transportation, the tax commissioners, the tax collector, roads and bridges, the parks, that's what goes into the property taxes that folks pay. Now, those are just points that folks have brought up. For me, I actually learned something, at the last hearing, a gentleman got up and talked about, from California, talked about Proposition 13, which, I have to admit, I was clueless on, but I did, I did my research and I read about it, and for those who don't know, it's a law that was passed in 78 in California that limits the property tax increases capped at 2% a year, very similar to 581. Basically, it froze, froze houses at the price they were when the folks bought them. So if you had it for 30 years, taxes really haven't gone up a lot. It's interesting to me, and there are a lot of causes, but bad part is 12,000 homes just burned to the ground out there. And so those 12,000 folks, there are going to be a lot of folks who had houses for 30 years, that maybe they're paying taxes at a $200,000 value, going to go to 4 million. I'm really interested, no, I'm not interested, I'm concerned, interested, I'm watching from afar, what's actually going to happen to that market, those people and their homes? Because now they have to be taxed at the new rate. With same thing with the storm, what their 5,000 homes hit in Columbia County, 250 destroyed. So with 581, the value of the new property would be taxed, not, not the old. So I appreciate y'all listening to me, something that I've learned. It was a real-life scenario of the 12,000 homes. Turn is obviously, it's got 50-year limit, so I'm 62, I'll be 112. So if we start talking about future considerations, we just have to really think that through. Now, I've read online, I've read online, we need to eliminate property taxes, that they, my wife and I own my own home, why should we keep paying property taxes? That's a great thought. Who's going to pay for the sheriff? Who's going to pay for the ambulance subsidy? Who's going to pay for fire and rescue? I mean, that's the biggest part of property taxes. So you eliminate them, but then essentially, what's that's going to do is make us beholden to the state. Are they going to give us the money? And I've read, that's what happened in California, local taxes didn't cover, so they were just dependent upon the state to give them money, how that turned out. So I say that I'm getting close to, I appreciate you putting up with me, there is no USAID in Columbia County. We're not spending $20 million to Iraq for a Sesame Street program, it's just not happening. I'm still very much a person who's going to do anything to box in the growth of government, but I also know that we have to just be very careful with 581, not box ourselves in and end up in a situation where people don't move from houses because they can't afford to, and property values are transferred totally to business, transferred, anytime somebody moves to the county, they're paying the new higher rate. It's, I don't want to call it clear as mud, but I know this board has spent significant time over the last six weeks, eight, matter of fact, other than picking up trees, this has been it. I mean, focused on what is the right decision for Columbia County for the next 20, 30, 50 years. So I appreciate y'all listening to my sermon. I'm still very much, personally, I said, I came into this totally 100% in, now, I don't want to say you could flip a coin, but it's very concerning. I appreciate you listening. Any other comments, questions?
In short, we were Doge before Doge was cool.
Mr. Johnson, I'm passing it to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just going to give a brief overview of House Bill 581, as I've done in the previous three hearings. I'm not going to spend as much time on it, I believe people have had the opportunity to see this online, hopefully, I think your explanation there covered a lot of the points that I wanted to cover, but I did want to just bring up a couple of, a couple of facts about House Bill 581, just to make sure everybody in the audience here is educated, and be glad to answer any questions afterwards, if anybody has anything. But House Bill 581 came out of the General Assembly last year. It was a bill to supposedly provide relief and clarity to taxpayers, it was a three-part bill. You had a statewide floating homestead exemption, which was one part of it, that's capping the homestead exemption at the CPI or a rate determined by the Department of Revenue Commissioner. There was an optional sales tax to further offset property taxes, I'm going to get to that in a minute, as to what you have to do to even be able to levy that sales tax. And then the third part of that bill was property tax process reforms. So really, three parts to House Bill 581. What you did not, Chairman mentioned this, when we voted last November, people say they voted for House Bill 581, we did not vote for House Bill 581. We voted for House Resolution 1022. And House Resolution 1022 gave the General Assembly the ability to pass bills like House Bill 581. They can continue to pass bills like House Bill 581. We essentially told them as a state, we now want the state General Assembly to give us bills like this. And it also gave local government, the Board of Education, the cities, the ability to opt out. So you, as, as a voter, you know, you voted to give the General Assembly that power, and you voted to give your local authority the power to opt out of anything that didn't fit that, that particular community. So that's what we actually voted on, we did not vote on House Bill 581. Some key dates that were in this, the tough part about this was, was the bill was passed into law, or signed into law by Governor Kemp April the 18th, but the county couldn't do anything educational-wise or anything otherwise until January 1st of this year. And that's when this process started, was January 1st. We were then given till, from January 1st to March 1st, to decide whether or not we were going to opt in or opt out. If we were even going to have public hearings like we are having, the law was very specific. It said that we had to post, in our local organ, the newspaper, we had to post, Columbia County Board of Commissioners intends to opt out of House Bill 581, even to have this hearing, we had to do that. We couldn't just say, we want to have the hearings to hear from our residents, we had to say that we intend to opt out. I will say, as the county manager, my direction of this board, it was never the intention of this board to opt out of anything before they heard from the citizens, but that's what we had to put, because that's what the law said we had to do. So we followed that, and now here we are at our fourth hearing on this, we had three scheduled, a minimum of three were required, but we had a snow day on one, so the board decided they wanted to do this, this fourth hearing. We talked about House Bill 581 providing that floating homestead exemption. Essentially, what that does is that limits the annual assessment increases on your homesteaded property only. It does not limit your property values, anything outside of your, of your homestead. It does not say that your property is not going to be worth what the market says it's worth. As a county, we're required to perform an assessment on your property every year, and that is market-driven, by law, it's market-driven. We have to turn in our numbers to the state, who then comes back and audits us, to make sure that the, the numbers that we're giving your property is in line with the sales surrounding your neighborhood. Similar houses, similar sales, similar sizes, you have the ability to appeal that. If you feel like you have the wrong value, you can appeal that, and we get several appeals every year. People think my house is not worth what the assessors say it's worth, so there's a process by which you can appeal that. What House Bill 581 does, though, is it places an artificial cap on your homestead property at CPI or a rate determined by the, by the Department of Revenue Commissioner. Now, we've been told that the Revenue Commissioner will use the CPIU, which this year is going to be 2.93%, but we have not been given that number yet. The Department of Revenue Commissioner could come back and say, we're going to cap it at 4%, 5%. I believe the CPI last year was 7.8%, so it could be capped at a much higher rate, and that will vary from year to year if we opt into House Bill 581. Whenever there's a substantial change in your property, then you will get a reassessment. And what is a substantial change? First of all, whenever it's sold, you do not get to carry this with you, so let's just say hypothetically that we capped it at 3% this year, and you sell your house next year, you move into your new house, you're going to pay taxes of whatever you paid for the new house, and then it'll begin being capped at whatever the rate of inflation is the next year. Now, the problem that we've seen with House Bill 581, as we're talking about this first element of it, is it's only applies to your homesteaded property, so it's the property that you live in if you have applied for a homestead exemption. If you have another property, a rental property, if you have a business in Columbia County, those are not capped in any way, shape or form. The chairman mentioned there are two multipliers that, that we use to calculate your property taxes every year. One is the value, minus any deductions that you may have, any exemptions that you may have, and then we multiply that by 40%. So you're then taxed, if it's a $100,000 home, you take off your exemptions, multiply that times .40, that's the value that you're taxed at, and then the other side of that equation is your millage rate. The chairman mentioned that this board, and board before you, in my tenure as the county manager, we have either kept the millage rate the same or lowered it, well, actually, we've lowered it nine out of the last 10 years, with the majority of those years lowering it all the way to the rollback rate. The rollback rate is the rate that is set by the state, or is calculated by us, that essentially says, we are negating that growth in your property value. Every community doesn't do that. There are many communities around the state that have not gone back to the rollback rate, they've left taxes exactly the same. Because remember, there's only two multipliers. You have the assessed value, and you have your millage rate. So as your assessed values were going up, this board and other boards have lowered the millage rate to balance that back out. The problem with 581 is if you cap this side, the revenue has to come from somewhere, we can certainly tighten up government, we can certainly cut services, we have to decide which services we're going to cut, but let's just say that we wanted to keep everything the exact same, we didn't want to lay off any deputies, we didn't want to change any services, we wanted to keep the same amount of revenue. If we cap these assessments, then instead of lowering that millage rate, we're going to have to leave the millage rate the same, not, not raise taxes, leave the millage rate the exact same. If we did that, if you have a homesteaded property, you would benefit. Now, we ran some, some examples of this, and we just took a, a house that we picked out of the blue, it's a median house in Columbia County, and we looked at that, and we figured over a five-year period, that homeowner would save about $52 a year in property taxes, is what they would save by capping that. We also looked at what happened if we lowered the millage rate, and as we lowered the millage rate every year, the property owner actually saved more money by us lowering the millage rate than they would have if we would have capped this by opting into House Bill 581. These are real numbers, it's sitting smoke and mirrors, real numbers. But what happens is, that's only on the homesteaded property. Let's say that you now own rental property in Columbia County, or the house that you're living in now, you don't have a homestead exemption, you've not filed for it. If that's the case, and we leave the millage rate the same, you're actually going to pay more money than you would have if we'd have lowered that other multiplier. So now you're paying more, and we looked at that same house that would have saved somebody $52, it would have cost that taxpayer $125 if we'd have left the millage rate the exact same. If we had, if we took a business, a business that's been in Columbia County for probably 30 years, again, just pick one, and, and we looked at that business, it was going to cost that business owner about $250 in additional taxes if we left the millage rate the same, as opposed to lowering the millage rate. So I say that to say that I think Columbia County has been diligent in, in our lowering of taxes to the tune of almost two mills over the last several years. We have lowered, 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 many times to the rollback rate. We have cut those taxes to try to keep that, those taxes down. So that's one issue with, with House Bill 581, that floating homestead exemption only applies to that, so what it does is it, essentially, if we left the millage rate the same and capped that homestead exemption, it helps that property owner, but it hurts our farmers, it hurts our large landowners, it hurts our businesses in Columbia County, and then obviously, if our businesses start getting hit with higher taxes, that could cause higher prices at the businesses, I mean, you've got to pass that on. So these are all things that I think the board's taken into consideration. The second piece of House Bill 581 gave us an optional sales tax to further offset property taxes. Now, this is an additional one-cent sales tax that we would get, that would be solely used for property tax relief. And people call, a lot of people call this the fair tax, but as we looked at that, we think that that may be a, a great thing for us, but first of all, we have to decide whether we're going to opt in or opt out by March 1st. We would put this floating local option sales tax on the ballot in November, so we wouldn't know ahead of time whether we would have the revenue to replace this lost revenue until November. We're doing our budget right now, we're going to set our budget in July. So the dates really don't line up for that, but let's just say hypothetically that, that we wanted to go the one-cent route. The problem with that is, is obviously it has to be approved by the voters, number one. Number two, all cities and counties in, in, in that particular area must opt in. So for Columbia County, that would mean that the City of Harlem- So for Columbia County, that would mean that the city of Harlem and the city of Grove Town and Columbia County would all have to opt into 581. If anybody opted out, it would take away all of our ability to levy the sales tax. We couldn't even ask the voters to levy a sales tax at that point. We've talked about, you know, what would be better about House Bill 581, and one of the things that we've discussed, if the legislature was going to give you, the voters, the ability to give yourself property tax relief, it would have been nice to go ahead and put the, the local option sales tax on the ballot at the same time, and let you vote on that, and say, I'd rather replace my property tax going up, or my values going up, I'd rather replace that with a sales tax. But we didn't do it that way, or they didn't do it that way. We have this process by which now we have to go. The other thing about the one cent sales tax is it can only be levied for up, up to five years. So let's just say hypothetically that us, Harlem and Grove Town all opted in, and we all decided we were going to levy the sales tax, and we're going to do property tax relief on that extra penny that we're going to levy there. We could do that, but it only lasts for five years. We would then have to go back to the General Assembly and ask them to allow us to extend that for another period of time. If the, if the delegation decided they didn't want to do that, it's giving the state control over local taxes, is what really that's doing. We have to go back and ask them for their approval to, to levy that tax a second time or a third time, or whatever the case may be. So again, that, that becomes a little bit burdensome. The last piece of this is just the tax reform itself. You will notice on your property tax bill, and I didn't mention this, you're already getting, if you look at your property tax bill in Columbia County, you will notice a credit on that property tax bill. Everybody in this room that pays taxes in Columbia County, you will notice a credit. That is the lost, local option sales tax. It's already one penny that you're paying. And in Columbia County, we use 100% of those proceeds to roll your property taxes back. Every county doesn't do that. Some counties use that for revenue in other places, or, or, I know some cities specifically that, not, not here, but in other counties that I've dealt with in the past, some cities don't roll back the sales tax, I mean, don't roll back the millage rate at all. They use that as an additional revenue for their general fund, but in Columbia County, we use 100% of that lost to roll it back. So you'll see a credit every year on your tax bill, in, in the amount of however much local option sales tax we collect. So we're already getting that. This floss would be another one penny. So as we contemplate, you know, saving ourselves potentially $52 a year, I guess we have to ask ourselves, how much would we spend in goods that we would buy with that extra penny? Would it add up to more or less than $52, and are you really providing yourself property tax relief? And then, of course, you're shifting that burden, like I said, because that has no application to the other properties that are non-homesteaded. So on the property tax bill itself, currently, we have to provide an estimate of the current year's tax. Very confusing, you all get an estimated tax bill every year. Typically, when you get that, it'll have last year's millage rate on it, you'll see how much your taxes went up, everybody gets really, really upset about that, we get all kinds of phone calls, oh my gosh, this tax bill's crazy. It's required by law that we send you that estimated tax bill, but that's before the board takes action and reduces the millage rate. It's before, really, all the digest has been completed, so it's just an estimate. So they did clean that part up, that part of House Bill 581 was good, in, in that, it cleaned that up a little bit where we don't have to do that, but it, it does have to put a disclaimer related to the rollback rate, it's only required if the rollback is not met. Every year that this Board of Commissioners has reduced taxes, again, talk about the language we have to put in the paper, you will see a notice of tax increase. So we have to put that in the paper. We are, we intend to raise your property taxes. That's even if this board is going to roll the millage rate back. We still have to put that in, unless we know we're going to go to the rollback rate, all the way to the rollback rate, and if we do that, we don't have to put anything in the paper at all. So there's a lot of nuances to the law that people may not understand, where essentially, you're getting the estimated bill, then we turn right around and, and have to put out a notice that says that we intend to raid property taxes, only to find out that we've lowered property taxes. Columbia County continues to be one of the, one of the counties in the state, we are leading the way with our millage rate. Our millage rate in Columbia County is one of the lowest in the entire state. People don't believe that. Our property values are high, the other multiplier's high, but our taxes, what this board is responsible for levying, remember, the taxes are based on, I mean, the assessment's based on the market, what this board is, is levying, is one of the absolute lowest in the entire state of Georgia. And we do a whole lot more with less than people give us credit for. There's many times when we compare our budgets to our benchmark counties from time to time, only to find out that our budget, our all-in budget, our M&amp;O budget, general fund budget, is much less than our benchmark counties. So we're, we're continuing to provide good services with a lower millage rate or lower property taxes. Let's see, the other thing, I think, it talked about local option sales tax, I talked about that, so there was a little bit of reform allowing us to levy that other penny. I'm sure I'm leaving some stuff out, but I wanted to be a little more brief, so unless there's questions from the board, I'll pause there.
The other. I was, I was just going to ask, there's a lot going on in Atlanta this week, and we've all been watching it. Is, is there any chance they're going to change something between now and the first, when we have to have a decision made?
Yep.
And what, what if we decided something and then they changed it?
Yep.
We're, we're already locked in?
Absolutely. So, yeah, so there, there are many bills being talked about right now. House Bill 92 got a hearing today. That is a, a House bill that actually directly affects House Bill 581. It's referred to as a cleanup bill that gives us a little more time to opt in or opt out. There is another House bill floating around right now, House Bill 370. That House bill requires us, if we opt out of this, it requires us to put a notice on your tax bill that said, we, and I'm, I want to make sure I get the wording right, but essentially what it says is Columbia County opted out of tax relief for its taxpayers. If you have any questions, we have to put our phone number on there for you to call us on the tax bill. So the legislature is, is putting bills out there now as cleanup bills to House Bill 581, because so many governments are opting out of that. Chairman mentioned, if we're in this, we're in this for 50 years. If a better deal comes along next year, we're in this for 50 years. I mentioned it one of the previous things, I know Commissioner Keraway may ask about this, about the T-SLOSS. So y'all know, we, we actually were one of the first adopters of the T-SLOSS, the transportation SLOSS, it's an extra one penny that has to go towards transportation. Columbia County's benefited from that, and, and hundreds of millions of dollars at one penny at the time, doing road repairs and expanding roads, widening Washington roads, some of the road projects going on now are all T-SLOSS projects. But Columbia County itself actually voted that down. The voters in Columbia County said, no, we don't want it, but as a region, as a region, it got voted in, so we, as Columbia County, got lumped into the region, so we got stuck with it. Good problem to have, because we benefited from that. The problem with it is, is a couple of years into T-SLOSS, some other counties decided, you know what, this isn't fair, we want to do this, but we don't want to go the whole regional route, we want to do a single county T-SLOSS. We just wanted to say, all the money that's collected in our county stays with our county for our transportation needs, which was one of the reasons why Columbia County didn't vote for it the first time, is we didn't want our money going to Atlanta, at which it didn't, but we thought that it might, so that was one of the issues. So we, the legislature came back a few years later and passed a single county T-SLOSS. And now counties are allowed to levy that single county T-SLOSS, and all the money collected in the county stays in the county for transportation. Well, we said, that's a great thing for us, because right now, we're a donor county. We're giving a lot of the money that's coming into Columbia County is going to neighboring counties, like Jefferson County, and Lincoln, and McDuffie, and, and they're our friends, and we like them, and we don't mind giving, but it's your tax dollars going to provide transportation needs in other counties, and we have a use for that here in Columbia County. So we wanted to have our own single county T-SLOSS. Well, guess what? We can't. We opted into the first one, we're stuck with it, we can never get out of the regional T-SLOSS. Now we have it forever. So I don't know what's going to come down the pipe in the next year or the next year, and, and/or, this board has the ability, and I know there's been a lot of discussion about you enacting your own homestead exemption in Columbia County that's controlled by the local government, as opposed to the state government, but if we opt into this, we don't really have that ability. So that's some of the issues, but yes, to answer your question, Commissioner Malier, there are many bills being contemplated right now that would change this, may have different effects, may, you know, it, it could be a whole different bill next year, and remember, House Resolution 1022, which is what the voters voted on overwhelmingly, gave the legislature the ability to drop one of these bills every single year if they want to. We don't know what's next.
Then to it, it could change after.
That's correct.
We don't, we'll know what we're, what we would.
Well, I mean, yeah, so I think.
You're in, you're in.
You're in, you're in, and it could change after you're in.
I, I think, I think elements of House Bill 581 could potentially change when you're in, but I, what I'm more concerned about is a better deal coming down the pipe that we can't opt out and then get the better deal. Ms. Feist, do you have a question?
It was the same.
Okay.
Any other comments? Couple of folks who... Adam Plagens? But Adam, just please state your name and record.
Adam Plagens, 4881, Rolling Hill Road. Members of the Commission, Columbia County residents, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak on the homestead exemption act commonly called House Bill 581. On behalf of the majority of Columbia County, which the media's been quick to point out over the past several weeks during these public meetings, I voted no on the ballot proposal. My no vote was directly related to the opt-out language in the ballot proposal itself. My years of military and federal service have taught me anything, it is that nothing with an opt-out clause is easy or straightforward. The ballot proposal, masterclass in wordplay, promised a cap on homestead tax valuations. This I agree with. However, the meaning of House Bill 581 removes Board of Education funding, which succinctly is profoundly stupid. Knowledge gap is widening among students across the state regardless of socioeconomic status. Remove funding that directly supports the school system is akin to lighting your house on fire to stay warm, being mad that you don't have a couch to sit on. House Bill 581 is a bad law written by the good idea fairies in Atlanta. The belief that allow multiple facets of a local community to opt in or out of a law and then figure it out is the absolute definition of chaos. The alphabet soup of, excuse me, the alphabet soup of floss, lost, and most adds even more confusion to what the intention of this law actually is. Opting into the bill would most, would most likely limit future flexibility within the community, and potentially hinder the ability to respond to local needs. At present, Columbia County Commission has been proactive in identifying opportunities to diminish tax burden on all of the residents. Yes, home values have steadily increased, which has inherently caused taxation increase. But Columbia County has been able to modify or rollback millages to offset some of this burden. While I do not fully agree with being taxed on the hypothetical value of my home, I get the tax revenue necessary to support the community we live in. Even with millage adjustments, there tends to be a net increase, but the tax burden is minimized. House Bill 581 limits that ability. I would remiss not to point out the hypocrisy of the law trying, that would tie our local government, community tax revenue to the whims of the state general assembly. This is government overreach at its finest. Columbia County, while not perfect, is functioning as it should, supporting local residents the best way possible. House Bill 581 diminishes this ability. My only request to this commission is to provide a detailed plan of what or how the county will move forward should you opt out of the House bill. To the audience, I encourage you to write your state representatives and express your concerns with the current law and demand an actionable resolution. Thank you.
Good evening, all. My name is Ms. Sandra Delk, and I live at 4325 Sun Valley Place in Martinis. Excuse me. Property tax notices for the year are mailed out in June. When I receive this notice, I look at the fair market value from the year before and the current year. In the tax year 2023, fair market value went up on my personal property, $45,659, and with this big jump, I would be paying $619.57 more in taxes in, in 2022. Excuse me, I'm nervous.
You don't have to be nervous, it's all good.
Don't be nervous.
You don't have to be nervous. Breathe away, here you go. All good, all good.
Okay, I got it. For a person on a fixed income.
Would you like me to read it for you?
No, I got it. Just give me a sec.
Take all the time you need.
$619.57, and have a very drastic, if they throw a budget for food, gas, and medication. When you're on a disability, you cannot go out and cannot earn extra money, thank you. Cannot go out and earn extra money. If you make a dollar, the government takes two back from you, and I know that from experience. If we do not agree with the fair market, we can fill out a paper to appeal the valuation. I filled out the paper out and went through the process of appraiser coming to my house, to my residence, him taking pictures, and me giving estimates on the reasons why my house that was built in 1975, and has not been remodeled at all, could be worth the fair market value listed on the tax notice. The assessor took the information, and the county would mail a decision to me. In early September, I received a property tax statement that the fair market value had been reduced by $9,006, and my taxes were going to be 9113 less than I paid in 2022. I'm thinking to myself, this is too good to be true. I look at the bill closely and see that a one-time tax credit called HTGR credit was enacted by govern, the governor, governor, and the General Assembly of the State of Georgia, and had reduced my bill by $447.89 that year. I looked at the due date, and it said, due 11/15/2023, which is normally when, when our bills are due. I put that amount in my budget to pay in November with a great big smile. In October, I received another property tax statement. My fair market value was $9,006 higher, and I would be paying $9166 more in taxes than on the first bill in September. It was, it was after hours, so I could not call to question why I had two tax statements. I called the next day and explained the situation to the office on the second floor, which is the tax assessor. The person was speaking, the person was speaking, I was speaking to said, I would transfer you to the tax assessor's office downstairs, that is their problem to figure out. I was transferred to the tax assessor's office, and I explained to them the situation, and they got on their computer and checked their information and informed me that my house was valued at $218,159. It was valued at a little more before that, and I did not have, my paperwork was filed, so I could not pull what that was, because I had appealed. They explained, they sent me a letter in September to inform me of this fair market value. I informed them, they may have sent the letter, but it did not arrive in my mailbox. I explained to them, I live in a neighborhood that was built in 1975. There are several addresses that have the number 4325. We all get each other's mail by mistake, and our postman does not look or care where he puts the mail. They informed me that because I did not appeal it by October 15th, it was the fair market value for 2023. I said, how could I appeal it when I did not receive the letter, and I'm holding a property tax statement that was printed on 8/31/2023? Well, that is the Columbia County Tax Commissioner's problem, we will transfer you back to them. I get a new person in the tax commissioner's office and explain my situation again. I explained what the tax assessor's office said about me not appealing, and I explained, this is my first time appealing, I'm learning this as I go, okay? I have two property tax statements, one is printed on 8/31/2023, and the other was printed on 10/16/2023. I tell her the fair market value on one, and then the other. She looks it up on her computer and proceeds to tell me, I am not reading the numbers right or correctly. I tell her, I know how to read numbers. I was a kindergarten teacher for a long time, and a pre-K teacher for a long time. She says, I don't believe you. Prove it.
That you are a kindergarten teacher?
No, prove that I have two tax statements, one saying one property value, one saying another property value. I look at my phone, I just wanted to make sure what I was hearing. She said, the only way you can prove it is to come to the commissioner's office, to which... which I reply, "I will be there in 15 to 20 minutes. I am not presentable. I need to put some pants and a decent shirt on." And who do I ask to speak with when I get there? I showed it to... when I arrived, I showed her the two statements, and she said, "This is not our problem. You will have to go downstairs to the tax assessor's office. The elevator is out the door and to the right." I walked in and explained everything again. I was instructed to sit down because the person I needed to speak with was in a meeting. The person I explained the situation to spoke to the person I needed to speak to, and he came prepared with an answer, the same answer that was given on the phone earlier. "We sent a letter. You did not appeal. Not our problem." I showed him the bill and said, "I am not going to pay the extra $9166 difference in taxes. We are just the assessors..." in which he replied, "We are just the assessors. The upstairs office does the bill. I'm going to call back upstairs and tell them that it's their problem, and they need to handle it." I got on the elevator, and many people have told me I have the patience of Job. You work with kindergartners, pre-kers, and you work in the school system? You gotta have it. I got on the elevator, and I know I have the patience of Job, but I walked in and I said, "I know I have the patience of Job, and the patience of Job is about to leave and take a hike. I would like to speak to someone who is knowledgeable and can handle this problem. I am not going to... I'm not going back downstairs, and they are supposed to be on the phone with someone in this office." The person helping me asked me to make myself comfortable, and she would go get someone to help me. A person came and motioned me to come to the window of the person that had helped me. I asked if she had spoken with the people from downstairs in the tax assessor's office. She said, "Yes, ma'am." I explained everything that had been said to everyone I talked with in both offices. I showed her my tax statements and said, "A first-year law student knows what is written on this paper dated 8/31/2023 is the proper amount that I will be paying this year." She asked if I can make a... if she can make a copy, and I said, "Please do. Please make a copy, and please give me my original back." Of course, she made the copy and asked me to sit down in a chair. I did. She came back about 15 minutes later and explained, "They had checked the computer usage and that somebody was experimenting with the values to see how the HTRG credit would affect taxes, and I was the random person they picked to see how it would affect taxes." They did not... they did not... in the computer, they did not fix the fair market value back to the original value, and it got mailed out accidentally. I looked at the person and said, "That's not my problem." And the first-year law student... I'm sorry, I didn't mean to...
No, that was pretty good.
Okay. I do not mean any offense to anybody, I promise you.
I'm sure that some people need to be offended.
"That is not my problem, and a first-year law student would tell you and knows what is written on this paper dated 8/31/2023 is the proper amount that I should be paying for my tax in 2023." She explained that the Columbia County Tax Commissioner was not in the office that day. The person asked me for my phone number. Of course, you know I gave it to her. And she explained that she would talk to the tax commissioner about the situation and call me the next day. The person called me the next day and explained they would honor the statement that was dated Kudos. I appreciated that. I told them thank you, and the person I was speaking to also put a note in the computer because I said, "I do not want any trouble when I walk in the office. I'm not going up and downstairs again, elevator again." And she said, "Okay." Then, here's where the phone call turned a little bit. She said in a very firm tone, which is fair enough, "Your fair market value will be $2,018,159 on your bill next year for 2024," getting even louder. I'm a type person, when somebody comes at me angrily, I keep quiet because I've been taught grievous words can stir people up, so you just kinda get quiet. So she got even louder. "Do you understand that your fair market value will be $218,159?" I still didn't say anything. She repeated it two more times loudly, getting louder each time. "Your fair market value will be $218,159 on your next year's statement." I replied, "Do you want to go ahead and make the appointment for the assessor that will come to my house when I fill out the appeal paperwork in June of 2024? I will appeal all the way to the Supreme Court if it warrants. I have the right as a citizen of Columbia County to do that." Good day. Clic. I know you're probably wondering why I told you this lengthy story. After I hung up the telephone, I was frustrated beyond belief. I felt I was disrespected. I felt like, you know, I had to fight for everything. So I worked through that, and I put it in my notes and on my calendar to appeal 2024 and to make sure I research and make sure I research and know how they assess property, know the steps to appeal the fair market value. In November, it's already been read 100 times, what we voted on in November. I got a question for you. After hearing my story, what would I vote? Think about it. When I was younger, I liked to listen to Paul Harvey and the rest of the story. I had to listen most of these meetings on phone because of various reasons. I attended the last school board meeting, and that was a real eye-opener. And through these meetings, I have gathered the rest of the story, and I feel like, Mr. Johnson, I've repeated what you've said tonight. And in November, we voted on it. And the bill, I think you changed it to House Bill 1022. Is that what y'all said?
House Resolution 1022.
House Resolution. Okay, 1022.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I did not know that when I wrote this, so I'd like to change it. What came about because of the number of frustrated persons calling Atlanta about property taxes. I know y'all know people are frustrated with property taxes. You've heard it. In November, I was researching, why was this resolution on there? I have voted since every election except one since I've been 16. The resolutions, they put them on there, and you scratch your head many times. What are these resolutions? So I researched. I may not be savvy at the Internet, but I could not find anything. All I saw was, "Somebody's going to cap property taxes." That's what went off in my head. In House Bill 581, in my opinion, there's a lot of vagueness in the way it will be handled, distributed, and the whole thing. I'm going to tell you something, I've read it. Y'all have cleared up a lot, but there's still a lot out there we don't know. Also, to commit to something for 50 years and not have hard numbers to crunch is not wise, in my opinion. This bill was passed on April 18, 2024. I learned tonight that you couldn't do anything in January. It was put on the November ballot as a referendum. Some questions I have. Does Columbia County not have a person looking at bills being passed in Atlanta? If you opt out, have you discussed a plan to lower fair market value property taxes? If not, are you prepared to deal with people who are frustrated with these issues? These are just some questions I have. Whether you opt in or opt out, I am one lifelong citizen of Columbia County that believes fair market value property taxes, House Bill 581, needs to be discussed because poorly-written bills are being passed because of people are frustrated with the current way of collecting property taxes. As I mentioned early, I am on disability and was a paraprofessional/teacher for over 40 years. My income is very limited. I cannot go out and get the extra jobs to make up the difference. I'm asking you to listen to what citizens are saying about this bill and what they're concerned about concerning the things on this bill and the issues, and try to find a solution and make a wise decision on House Bill 581. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sure. Thank you.
Betty Cerancy?
I'm Betty Cerancy, and I live at 604 Kavanaugh Way. This is my fourth meeting that I've gone to. I've gone to three of yours and one of the Board of Education. And so my purpose tonight is maybe you to give some answer to some questions. So I just have some things that are unclear in my mind. The first thing is regarding the base value of the home. I'm in real estate, and so I deal with a lot of people that look like me. They're last-time sellers, and so they have a lot of questions when it comes to taxes and things like that. So the base value of the home, the reset is when it is sold, correct? So when I'm at a closing and they're computing the property taxes, are they... and they're going to settle up between the buyer and the seller, are they going to compute them based on the homesteaded value set in 2024 or on the new value of the purchase? So then the seller would be obligated, based on the new value at closing of the property versus what they were paying the year before? That's a question.
That's a great question.
Okay, okay.
No answer.
No, we don't have an answer for that. Okay, all right.
It doesn't mean you know. You have to go...
No, that's okay. That's why I'm asking.
I would assume it would be on the new value.
It would be on the new value, which is why Proposition 13 in California has...
It would be on the new value. So the seller...
I'll verify that for you.
It is on the new value.
So the seller would participate settling up taxes for that year based on what they are selling it for, but instead of what their homesteaded value would be. That's the assumption.
I believe that.
Have you all heard of the Stephen Day exemption in Savannah? Okay, I just encourage you to look at it. If you haven't, you're familiar with it?
I've briefly read it, but it's the Stephen Day exemption in Savannah, Chatham County.
Yes. So if we're looking at, you know, potentially creating something on our own, I thought that was an interesting exemption that's been in effect since 1999. And the way I understand it is when you purchase your home, it caps your value then, and that's and it stays at that, okay, until you sell it. So I could have misinterpreted that, but it sounded very interesting. All right, so when there's a substantial change, who initiates that proceeding? Does the homeowner do it? I mean, a substantial change could be a storm that we just had.
Let's just say they're adding on a bedroom or something.
Right.
You have to get a permit.
Permit, so that would...
It's a definition.
It's any improvement.
Any improvement.
Any improvement.
Any improvement.
Okay. Or if it was destroyed...
Any improvement.
Any improvement.
So like if I have to replace a water heater?
You'd have to ask the general legislature whether what they mean by any improvement, but I would assume that's arguably not an improvement, that's just a fix.
Okay, all right. The other thing was, you already have projected that under, I guess it would be HR 1022. I learned that tonight, too. If we are under that, that we're already going to have a shortfall of four to five million dollars potentially, based on...
Budget is not done yet.
Okay. But we will...
That's a fair estimate.
That's a fair estimate, okay. So we know our taxes don't go away, and we're going to shift... we're just going to shift them, you know, somewhere else. It would be our landowners or our commercial property, whatever. So if we go to the optional sales tax for property tax relief, this is so new, and I know it just came to me today, but if we go away with the penny, as it's proposed in Washington, that we no longer have a penny, so will we be getting maybe four more cents instead of one penny? We'll be getting four more cents or two more?
I'll say this, had they combined the two, which I know some folks are against that, the fair tax, but had they combined the two?
Right.
It's almost a wash.
Okay.
The one cent sales tax is... What's it, 42 million-ish on our general fund comes from homestead or...
It's property taxes.
Property taxes.
Real property taxes, not motor vehicle.
Taxes, right. But if you took the penny, it's going to generate close to 40 million if all in, and so on. It was a package deal.
But we might not need a full penny. I mean, we can go up to one penny, I guess, right? 1%. Is it one penny or is it 1%?
It's a penny.
Up to a penny.
What, one cent? Okay.
Ms. Cerancy, before you go too far down the road about the penny, remember that we can't even ask for the penny to be on the ballot unless both cities...
Right. I was just going to say that. We don't know that yet about Harlem and Grove Town.
We... that's a wild card.
Right. That's a wild card. Yeah, absolutely. Okay. So based on our current budget, what percent would we need to make up the shortfall today? Have we looked at that to know what the percentage would be today based on our current budget?
Well, right now, we're focused on budgeting flat year over year, as much as we can, just in anticipation, but you'd have to speak...
The current shortfall, just on the property taxes exemption side, is a little over 4 million is the estimate for us.
So what would that equate to? You're saying you're collecting 40 million on one cent? Did I...
No, I said, no, if you take our average sales tax revenue, three and a half million right now.
Okay.
Times 12.
Okay, so, all right. So that would... it would be a wash, is what you're saying. So if we get that optional sales tax relief, that's for all property, homesteaded, commercial land, who determines how that money is allocated? If everybody's going to get to benefit out of that that extra money coming in, how much is going to the homesteader? How much is going to the commercial? How much is going...
It would be across the board, right?
It's across the board because it's applied to the millage rate. So it reduces the millage rate to all property, so it'd be across the board.
Okay, all right. Obviously, Plan B is if it doesn't get voted in in November, our Plan B is if we are in and...
Millage rate next...
Has to go up. Okay, all right. So I guess everybody has read that Columbia County Board of Education opted out, and when I was just doing some research, I don't know, this could be AI, so it might not be accurate, but it made it sound like about 85% of the school systems in Georgia are opting out of being a part of this. So their millage rate, is it applied to the homesteaders' value set in 2024? Is that how their millage rate for the school?
Their value would continue to rise, just like it does now. Their value wouldn't change, and their millage rate could go up as well.
It would be a 25 because they're reassessed, whatever the reassessment was.
But their millage rate would be...
Millage rate's 17 right now, so whatever the value, if they didn't change it...
Right.
They didn't increase it or decrease it, then when the property values are set this summer, whatever the millage rate, multiply times that. So it would be the value of the property this year.
Okay, so each...
Times 40%.
Right. So each year, it's going to be based on the homesteaders' locked-in rate, even though they've opted out of it?
Not for the school board, theirs... Not for the school board, theirs, theirs goes with that fair market value that everybody has heartburn with, right?
Okay, so it's going to be based on fair market value.
So we will, we will have to calculate everyone's fair market value, even if we were to opt in. You would then get a credit on that, on our portion.
Okay.
But the fair mark, everyone would have the same fair market value that they would begin their calculations.
Mm-hmm.
Us, the cities, the school board, everyone.
And the process to determine fair market value stays the same, but in five-eighty-one, cap set at whatever the CPI, whatever the state says it is, you get a credit, like you said, it could be, they could say, you have a two-thousand-dollar house bill, but the reality is you got a thousand-dollar credit because of five-eighty-one.
So we don't have to figure out four different values. We figure one value, and then depending on which entity, that's how we.
Actually, I wasn't thinking where you were going.
So we might have to hire more people to be able to calculate all this for our, you know, to be able to implement all this, so. Okay, so, you know, I understand that the Columbia County residents overwhelmingly voted in House Resolution ten-twenty-two, but I feel like after being to three of y'all's meetings and one of the Board of Education, there's still a lot of confusion, even with y'all. I mean, you, you don't have all the answers yet, too, so. And I'm not saying that negatively, it's just not written well so that everybody understands where we're going. I'm glad that Connie brought up HB ninety-two because I've been following that, and it's in committee. I asked Rick Allen today, I said, you're going to be there tomorrow, we got to get this thing going because I don't know when you're, you're going to plan to vote, so we need to know if we have an extension on that, so.
We'll have to vote by next Friday unless that passes.
Oh, pardon me, sir?
Next, by next, next Friday.
Okay.
Not this week, but next week.
Right. But if they're going to extend, give us more time, I'm hoping they're going to move it through the committee in Atlanta and vote on it soon, so we'll know. We don't know. So the one thing that, you know, besides it being poorly written, you know, if you opt out, you can never be invited back to the party. If you opt in, you're in for fifty years. A lot of people here look like me. We're not going to be alive in fifty years. We're leaving.
Yeah, a hundred and twelve.
Yeah, yeah, we're going to leave this to our children and our grandchildren, and they're not here making the decisions tonight, you know, for, for the county. So, you know, I believe opting in reduces Columbia County's ability to self-government, self-govern. I think you've done a great job, and I'm not in favor of Atlanta making decisions for Columbia County. I think we need to have Doge up there, actually. Columbia County can be innovative and create our own floating exemption if needed, that future citizens of Columbia County will have a voice at the ballot box to do. So I thank you for listening to me.
Betty. Thank you, Ms. Cerancy.
I'll stay away from the, hey, you got voted in joke.
No, that was Uncle Bobby.
No.
No, my name's John Kennedy. I'm forty-four ninety-one Andover Drive, and before I get started, I wasn't going to mention the water today. Never losing water after the hurricane, but darn if you didn't put the budget up there. So.
Say again?
Darn if you didn't put the budget up there. You put the water budget up there, you know? I mean, last time I was harping on about how we never lost water after that hurricane and, you know, but I'm glad to see that budget up there because I'm.
Well, there's just projects, projects that are ongoing.
Well, it's going toward the infrastructure, right? So that's.
Yes.
But, so, thank you, an opportunity to speak again tonight. Thank you for holding the fourth meeting after the snow and everything. Really appreciate that. There's been a lot of discussion regarding the will of the voter in this bill, especially like online and things like that, you know, just talking about opting in, opting out. If you opt out, you're going against the will of the voter and so forth. You know, it's, it's already been mentioned that the ballot measure from November was approved by about sixty-six percent majority countywide, and it's fairly uniformly across all the precincts. And then we've, we've discussed it, but you know, it is important to note that what voters saw on the ballot in November was not this bill, it was House Resolution ten-twenty-two. And it included much less prescriptive wording adopted in February last year with HB five-eighty-one passing later in March. Many voters, myself included, didn't see the ballot item until November and weren't aware to, excuse me, and weren't aware that the bill to enact the ballot measure had already passed. Because quite frankly, the idea wasn't even on my radar until I read the ballot measure. And it should be noted that the verbiage on the ballot presents a general proposal, not the specifics from the bill that had already been passed. Nowhere on that ballot is five-eighty-one mentioned or any of its, any of its requirements. And I promise I didn't have your notes tonight, but, you know, it read, shall the Constitution of Georgia be amended so as authorized the General Assembly to provide by general law for a statewide homestead exemption that serves to limit increases in the assessed value of homesteads, but which any county, consolidated government, municipality, or local school system may opt out of upon the completion of certain procedures. So it doesn't mention the sixty-day window, it doesn't mention the one-and-done, you're either in, you're in, you're out, you're out. And it doesn't mention that fifty-year sunset. But none of that was presented to the voter in November. This bill's already caused massive confusion on how it requires local governments to even announce to the public they'd like to consider opting out by requiring them to announce that they intend to opt out. Can we really blame citizens for being upset based on the wording, the Columbia County Board of Commission intends to opt out when the hearings hadn't even been held? There are still people confused by this wording, and rightfully so, and this is just from the two paragraphs that the bill, from the bill that provided the opt-out verbiage. What confusion lies ahead in implementing the full provisions of the entire twenty-seven-page bill? Some uncertainties that jump out to me is, well, which measure of inflation will be chosen by the state, whether or not the sales tax referendum will pass, which we've already discussed that, and, you know, how will this affect county revenues and what those effects will look like, whether it's a county-wide millage rate increase, any cuts to budget or somewhere in between? Just about one of the only real certainties that I see in this is that once you're in, you're in. And again, this was not on the ballot. Property taxes are a very real concern for a lot of folks, and some folks are in difficult situations as a result. I'd rather see legislation offer additional tools to local governments to address this rather than place more limits on the tools that the governments have had for quite some time. Georgia has a hundred and fifty-nine counties. After Helene, the last announcement I read, listed forty-one counties as eligible to receive FEMA assistance. As noted in last week's announcement, FEMA assistance will not be extended, and thankfully, Governor Kemp's offering state funds to help. But with that being said, this is a massive expense, only, and only twenty-five percent of the counties of Georgia are having to deal with this. The other three quarters do not. If Columbia County didn't opt out of this bill and had to raise revenues to pay these expenses, how would HB five-eighty-one affect this? We are not a one-size-fits-all state when it comes to funding our local budgets, and we need every budget tool possible to handle this in the most efficient way possible. Whether it's emergency services, infrastructure, recreational spaces, or other benefits that citizens receive from their local governments, these demands are made locally. The ability to meet the financial needs of those demands should rest in the local government with every tool available. Back to the will of the voter. It's important to remember that the ballot measure included two pieces. Yes, it included the property tax relief proposal, but it also included the ability to opt out. I have attended several meetings where individuals who are very informed in local affairs were not aware of HB five-eighty-one's restrictions. Many of them said that if they had known the details of five-eighty-one, they would not have voted for the ballot measure. It's very possible that many of the voters who voted in favor of the ballot item would not have done so if five-eighty-one itself had been on the ballot. Revisiting these hearings, the opinions of the speakers have progressed from roughly fifty-fifty opt-in, opt-out on the first meeting in the evening to nearly a hundred percent opt-out in the last, and we'll see how the rest of this evening goes. It's possible that a large number of citizens voted for the ballot measure because it had the opt-out verbiage. Perhaps if it lacked the ability to opt out, the results of the ballot may have been very different, and unfortunately, there's no way to know. You know, these past couple of months have been very educational. I've learned a lot more about county finance than I knew before, and certainly more than I knew in November when I cast that ballot. You know, I'm willing to bet that, and I'm not the only one, and I'm a lifelong Columbia County resident, I'm proud of our local government and how well it's run. There may be other local governments in the state that aren't rolling back millage rates to help offset property taxes like Columbia County's done, and there may be local governments that are taking advantage of increased property values to pay their budgets. Perhaps this was part of what went into creating HB five-eighty-one. I don't believe our county has done that, and I believe our county would be perfectly justified in opting out. So with all that said, I respectfully ask that you take all this into consideration when making your decision. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your service to our community.
Thank you, John.
My name is Nate Rish, nine-twenty Lamb Lane in Apple. First off, I'd like to thank Doug and Scott for the explanation you provided. It was very, very helpful because I came into this meeting with a different perspective when I first came in. I frankly don't think fifty-two, fifty-two-dollar savings is juice worth the squeeze, just to be honest. But I do believe it's very important to ladies like Sandy to find a method to reduce their property taxes. I'm always a small government conservative. I believe handling issues at the lowest government level possible. That's where you can do the most good and have the most efficiency. So having Atlanta make a choice for us, it is a ballot initiative that's given us a hard choice to either lock in to a one-size-fits-all restrictive solution or use a localized smarter solution, which I believe in this case, opting out, is going to be the localized smarter solution. I will make an interpretation, just like the gentleman just spoke. The reason sixty-three percent of voters statewide voted for the original referendum, message should be relatively clear, the significant majority wants property tax relief, one way or the other. A little background as to why I would even come here to speak at this meeting. In actual numbers, my property tax has doubled in the last six years, and it would have tripled had I not appealed those taxes five times. School taxes, however, are the problem, not taxes that you guys represent here. And so our county school board has already voted three to two to opt out. So regardless of what situation you guys take or what decision you guys make, we're still going to be hit with much higher taxes over time. The millage rate of seventeen percent that's on there currently is a sixty-five to seventy percent of your tax bill. So the fact that the school board has already decided, frankly, without much public input, I'm concerned, as far as I'm concerned, that they're going to raise the tax rate, essentially keep it in line with the current status quo, is the real problem. So if the folks in this room want property tax relief, you need to be voting for a new school board. Amen. We homeschool, and in case you haven't noticed what the numbers are, Columbia County is becoming a homeschool county. The homeschool community in Columbia County is rapidly increasing, and in part, large part because of our school board. The reality is that homeschool community is not getting any advantage from these taxes because the sixty-five to seventy percent of our tax bill is going to the school board, and we are not putting our children in Columbia County schools. So in short, Chatham County, Cobb County, both have some level of floating homestead exemption. For people who want to keep their homes in Columbia County and don't intend to sell for a long period of time, I like living in Columbia County. I hate the traffic, but I like living in Columbia County. I've been living here.
That's our fault, too, by the way.
I understand that. So, and I understand there's a, there's a concern, we want to have growth, and we want to have new business come in and so on and so forth, but reality is that living here definitely has its advantages, and the main advantages that are provided to us are from the taxes that this board oversees, right? Low crime due to Sheriff's Department, very competent Sheriff's Department, doesn't harass people, does the right thing, fire department that is very highly rated, accredited, you know, the water department does an excellent job, we had water all through the hurricane when a lot of counties around us did not. Our county responded exceptionally well to the hurricane, I think, overall, and it was a once-in-a-lifetime type event. So I, I give a lot of credit to the government services that are used here. So those portion of the taxes, I believe, are an effective use of government money, right? Where I, where I differ is with the school board, right? And I want everybody here to understand that when I say I believe we should opt out, that the school board is the ones that should have opted in. That would have changed, and yes, I know it would have hurt their revenues, fine and dandy, they need to tighten their belt. But at the same time, these are functional government agencies that are performing a constitutional government service. So I believe that in a case like this, that it is necessary to opt in, but at the same time, we do need to be looking countywide, school board included, at some sort of floating homestead exemptions like Cobb County and Chatham County have, that address long-term homeowners like Sandy here, who have been in their place for a long time, don't intend to go anywhere, they do need some level of relief. And for the people who discussed earlier about when you buy the new house, the value is going to be set at that new, it does that anyway. It does that right now. Your house is automatically set to whatever the purchase price is, that's your new fair market value. So I, I don't see any change with that, but if somebody's going to live in their house for twenty-five years, thirty years, and then their descendants are going to get it when they pass on or something like that, a homestead exemption would be a very effective way to cap their property tax, if it, if it were a floating exemption that we could establish at the local level instead of at the Atlanta level. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may, just for a second, I, I was booed by Ms. Delk's comments, and, and I've been feverishly over here doing math, and I'd be glad to go over this with you, Ms. Delk, if you want to do, look at this later. But I just took a look back at the last five years, and I looked at her property taxes and looked at what she would have paid if we'd left the millage rate the same versus what she would have paid if House Bill five-eighty-one would have been enacted five years ago, and the difference is a hundred and three dollars over five years is the difference.
Every year, or total?
Total, in the county taxes. That's assuming the CPI was only going up by three percent. It went up by seven-point-eight percent last year, so in reality, under House Bill five-eighty-one, you'd have paid more in property taxes than you would have by this board lowering the millage rate as they have over the last five years. So, you know, I just, I, I feel for people that are, that are in that situation, but I just, I just felt compelled to share that. Now, that does not take into consideration the school tax, and I'm not trying to throw the school board under the bus. Yes, ma'am, but, but I, but as far as Columbia County property taxes, what it takes to operate this Columbia County government, it was a hundred and three dollars over a five-year period, and that's assuming only a three percent growth on that cap. I think there would have been years that would have been higher, therefore, in her House Bill five-eighty-one, she'd actually paid more taxes than she would have by you lowering the millage rate over the last five years.
Another good reason we should continue to lower it?
Yes, I think we should continue to lower the millage rate. I think that's what this board has the ability to do and has shown that, that really.
Willingness.
The willingness to do that, and history speaks for itself. It's one thing to say that you're going to do it next year, but you've done it for the last nine years. The only year we didn't lower the millage rate was the COVID year, and we left it the exact same that year because everybody had no idea what was coming our way. But after, besides that, you've lowered the millage rate every year for the last, or nine out of the last ten years. So that, that's the way.
Property value.
Approach property tax relief.
That's the ability to do that.
That's correct. If we opt in, I don't see how we can lower it. You can't lower both multipliers, you can lower one or the other. We have shown that I think we're lowering this one. I'm not advocating for or against, but, Ms. Delk, I appreciate your comments. I've done a lot of math over here on your property, real quick, because I wanted to see, I really wanted to see how it affected a property owner, and I think it's a really good example. Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else? Sir?
Come up here so we can hear you.
If you want to. That's okay.
Oh, like, yeah, as far as exemption.
You would just state your name and address to the record, sir.
Oh, okay, David Lee's four-fourteen Parliament Road.
Thank you.
What I'm probably more concerned about right now is the fact that y'all are changing my vote. Not so much this problem should have been worked out before it even made it to the voters, and I, I agree with a lot of the stuff you said, and I understand a lot more than I did, and I gave Connie a whole earful.
That's okay, that's my job.
I, I, over, over texting, but I still think you're changing our vote. That kind of doesn't sit right with me. That kind of doesn't sit right with me.
But it's, still, I'm more concerned about how they just managed to change the voters' vote than I am about the real issue.
Is it Mr. Lee or Leeds?
Lee's, L-E-E-S.
Mr. Lee's. Practically, in practicality, we actually, any decision we make is affecting HB 581. You voted on House Bill 1092-
I voted on-
The legislature-
I read like all the other people.
Exactly, sir, and then the legislature pulled a bait and switch and replaced the one-and-a-half-page bill you've, or amendment that you voted on-
Right.
-with a 27-page monster that we are now left to deal with. It is not the same thing.
I still don't like the fact that they put in a clause that says that the county officials can change the vote of the voter.
That was their vote. That was what they-
I do know that it's opt-in and opt-out, but I had no idea that they were taking my vote and the majority of the voters, and standing there saying, "Well, we don't care what your voters say." We don't. And what I'm saying is, I wish the exemption would help us like it helped Ms. Sandy there, because we're in the same boat she is. We're on fixed income. And my house, I bought for $80,000, is now being valued at $300,000. And that's due, not to what y'all did, but it's due to a lot of the real estate and shenanigans that's been going on, when people go out there and put your house up for sale and stand there and say, "Oh, we got 10 people to bid on your house." Your $300,000 house is now worth $350,000, which takes and turns everybody's house in the neighborhood more expensive.
I will say that we do, we do care and appreciate the voter turnout, and, you know, the fact that 67% of Columbia County voters voted yes on HR 1022, and I know for me that all of these points that we've been going through, I always reconcile it back to that, and look at that, and it makes it even that more of a difficult decision. So I don't want you to think that we have ignored that fact because we-
I don't think y'all have, and I'm not fussing at y'all, so to speak, I'm fussing at the fact that my vote got changed.
Right.
And-
It did. You're correct, it did get changed.
It's not right. There should never be a bill like this again, ever.
And Mr. Lee's, this is the ballot question that you see up there, that's exactly what we voted on?
Yes.
It says, "Shall it be amended to authorize the General Assembly to provide for general law for a statewide homestead exemption?" That could be anything, 581 or anything else, that limits the increase in the assessed value of homesteads, and then it says by which, you know, any of those folks can opt out. So you actually gave the local government the ability to opt out by voting yes.
Now, but that's not the way I took that statement.
No, a lot of people, Mr. Lee's, didn't-
Those folks don't think that.
But it's still, it's more-
We opt out, that's the biggest thing we're going to deal with, people think-
Y'all are doing a great job on a lot of things, even though I-
Thank you.
-fussed Connie about some-
She deserves it, sir, I've served with her for six and a half years.
And, but I still, I've got this gnawing that you're changing the vote of the voter, and not you.
I get it, not-
It's being changed, Mr. Lee's, you're correct, and we're as frustrated as anyone. Truth, I've been frustrated all day, and my compatriots up here know that. My head's going to turn blood red in a second, because I've been trying my very best to contain my fury at what has been happening in Atlanta. But specifically, sir, what you're seeing right here, this was the legislature's idea to cover any actions they take.
I know.
They could have passed 581 without this.
Yeah, I get it, and I understand that.
But they wanted to be able to say, "No, no, no, you voted for it, the citizens gave us this, so now we have this right." Today-
No, I need to go back to the other people in Atlanta and discuss my dis-
We'll give you their phone numbers. Yes, we'll be glad to.
And addresses, and times they'll be home?
Don't worry, I found Connie's, I can find anybody.
And as Mr. Johnson touched on briefly earlier, today, out of committee, they come up with what we call House Bill 370, which requires us to tell the citizens-
I seen that.
-that we chose to opt out of property tax relief for them.
But that's what I read.
I mean, that's-
Bad. They're putting words in your mouth now.
They are, and it has been bothering me terribly all day, because there's not really anything we can do about it.
It's just as bad as taking my vote away.
We cannot do anything about it.
We have to do something still, I mean-
I understand what you're fixing to do, I do.
Yes, sir.
But I still just needed to make a statement that this little clause that was in this accusing bill just affected a voter's vote.
Yes, sir.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody wants her contact information, we'll be free to, so just funnel all the complaints through her.
Mr. Lee's will be happy to tell you.
Mr. Chairman, you got one more?
Yeah, one gentleman over there as well.
Okay, if you just, oh, was somebody in front? No, you go ahead, sir, go ahead, just please state your name and address to the record, sir.
My name is Jonathan Culp, and I'm at 1036 Iris Glen Drive. My wife and I have been citizens here for approximately 15 years. I got transferred in from Iowa, a state with very good school systems and property taxes fairly high. Came to Columbia County because Columbia County had a history of having good school systems, so wasn't unaccustomed to paying high taxes. I don't care to pay for high taxes, I would like them to be a lot lower, but specifically to opting in and opting out, I think it makes perfect sense for us to opt out. I would ask you to do it quickly, and, because I think tying yourself up for 50 years just doesn't, just doesn't make any sense, because there's so much change happening so quickly. Tie yourself to that is not logical in my mindset, anyway. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I was told I wasn't going to do this, I had spoken before. My name is Leon Borders, and I live at 912 Adderley Lane. I totally agree with everything that you all are saying. Thank you very much, Mr. Borders, I appreciate it, and all my board members. I think that if everyone in here would consider what is actually being done by Columbia County, I think they would agree that the amount of taxes that is raised in Columbia County for the benefits that we have the option of getting because we moved here is sensational. I don't think that that's the problem. I think the real problem has already been spoken on, and it's the school taxes. Because if you look at the school taxes here in Columbia County, although the school's system is fantastic, the way that I'm understanding it, and please correct me if I'm wrong, we have this 1% sales tax, we have this slot tax, it's supposed to cover for the building of the schools and blah, 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 but it does not include the administrative running of the schools.
Correct.
And so when the school system imposes that extremely high taxes, it's what's getting everybody in the room. If I were to look at my taxes alone for Columbia County, everything put together, and then look at the school tax, the school tax is three times the amount of what Columbia County has. That is the issue. But the other concern is, if we opt out in Columbia County with all of the great things that you all are doing, then should that not be uniform across the board with the school taxes as well? They're opting in, that allows them to charge so much more of a higher rate.
They've already opted out.
I think you're, you're just reversed, so they opt out.
So the main concern would be the school tax. And when you look at the school tax, and I'm just briefly going to say this, based on what I understand, the school tax itself has no exemptions regardless to whether you have children in school or not. I heard the gentleman speak on, they don't allow the homeschooling. You're going to pay that school tax regardless of whether you have kids or not, regardless of whether, what your age would be.
70, you can opt out.
Okay, but then they're assessing it across the board also, to my understanding, based on the value of your home. So if I have a home that's here at 4,000 square feet, and down the road, my neighbor has one at 2,000 square feet, then I'm assessed a higher tax based on the square footage of my home, which is not fair from my point of view, because if our kids go to school, to the same school, and get the same benefits, then why should we pay a different tax based on the square footage of the home? To me, that doesn't make sense. I think that, and this is my personal view, that it should be across the board, if we're going to assess a tax, it should be across the board for the school system and not based on the square footage of your home. In addition to, if you're going to make an improvement on your home, and I heard the gentleman speak in terms of every improvement you make, if I make a chandelier change in my home, it's an improvement, and this is just as an example, then the value of my home goes up based on whatever improvements I make. I can understand if it was a major improvement, it would be something totally different, but it's not, it's any improvement. And so it kind of penalizes to people who are attempting to do something a little bit better than they were before in previous years. So that's my statement, thank you very much for listening to my outburst.
So would you say you think we should opt out?
No, I think that it's better for us to control our own destiny. I think opting out, the way that I understand it, is the better way of doing it. Yeah, but that's me.
Thank you for speaking.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else? Certainly appreciate you coming. Going to close this public hearing, I'm going to adjourn, and then give it five minutes, and then we'll jump into a actual commission meeting.
Which you're welcome to stay for.
Please. Next week. We cut the budget, we didn't have to-
Yeah, I hate the last kid.
Okay, refocus. Meeting has been called to order. I'm going to fence with the invocation and the pledge, because we've already done it. At this point, all the commissioners are still here, praise the Lord, and we're going to, commissioners, you have the minutes from the February 4th commission meeting. Packets, if you've had a chance to review them, I'll have, accept the motion to do so.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the minutes of the previous meeting and public hearing as presented. Second?
Well, I didn't ask for the second one, but I'll accept.
Why, motion that's so-
I'm trying to drag this meeting out 11 minutes for a friend, I was-
Oh, is there a bet to see how long we can-
Did I say that out loud? I'm just kidding. This motion is second and four on the favor of your right hand. Motion carries. Do you have the presentations out here? No special recognition, so we're going straight to the consent agenda. Commissioners, you have the items on this consent agenda, they've been through the necessary committees, the necessary votes to be placed on this, if they still meet with your approval, I'll accept the motion to approve all.
Move for approval.
Questions? Raise your right hand. Onto the debate agenda. Mr. Allen, I believe you're up.
Yes, sir, I would like to make a motion to approve-